And we are live, sir. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Are we in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, sir, we are. Thank you.
Would you please hand join me for the Pledge of Legions?
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chris, can you do the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Harkins? Mr. Ames?
Here.
Mrs. Becker?
Here.
Mr. Lennox?
Here.
Mr. Stanford?
Here.
Mayor McCann?
Here.
And Mr. Harkins?
Here.
All present, sir.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody who's coming Saturday. I thought it was a great event. The staff did a wonderful job putting it together. Mrs. Lee, it was pleased with the whole thing. It went over very, very well. I thank you all for being here, and I thank the staff who put together a wonderful day. Need a motion now to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all of them raise their right hand.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Today, we're going to do a consideration of resolution on local sales tax. Mr. Orlando, would you please kick off the discussion and provide some background to the item?
Yes, sir. Good evening or good afternoon or good morning, everybody. Going to get used to that. John Troyer, our Finance Director, will be giving you a presentation this morning. Beaufort County will, has, has agreed to consider adding the local option sales tax to the November ballot. Other municipalities have, Bluffton, Port Royal, and Beaufort have made recommendations to add the ballot and support the, the local option, add to the ballot and support the local option sales tax. So today, we're six weeks out, and today, we'd like to give you some background on it, let you know how it affects a Hilton Head Island resident, a Hilton Head Island visitor, and provide that substantial background to you. In your packet, you have, you have or had a a presentation. It's, it's very robust. I've received a few questions since we sent out the packet, and Mr. Troyer is prepared to answer some of those questions today as he's researched, as he's done some research. So with that, Mr. Troyer.
Thank you, Mr. Orlando. I'm going to share my screen, and we'll get started.
Well, while we're waiting, John, is it appropriate for us to ask questions through the presentation or wait until the end?
Absolutely. Jump right in, and we're happy to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, I hope that you can see my screen. Okay, great. Local option sales tax. Here's a little bit of background information in order for you to have a full consideration. As an introduction, state law provides each jurisdiction the opportunity to enact a local option sales tax or a lost. The state law prescribes the process on how to hold referendum for the public to choose to enact this tax. State law prescribed certain requirements on how the proceeds of the tax should be allocated. And although the majority of the proceeds would be for property tax relief, each jurisdiction does have some discretion in the allocation of the proceeds. Where these numbers come from? Our county officials have worked with our State Department of Revenue officials, and they have come up with some estimates, and I will kind of walk through these calculations. That was kind of a combined effort. Credits do apply to real, personal, and commercial property. South Carolina Department of Revenue has estimated the annual loss collections to be forty-eight million, five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three sixty-four. And so here's the different allocation between the jurisdictions. And so what that means is there's approximately four point eight billion dollars in annual taxable sales, and you can see the split between the different jurisdictions.
John, this is a place where I do have a question, and perhaps you'll get to it in later in the presentation. If that's the case, then certainly I can wait. But in terms of in terms of Hilton Head's collections ratio, is there any way to tease apart how much of that is generated from residents on the island versus our tourists and visitors?
Sure. There, there has been a study in the past, and that study, it's a few years ago, but the number came out just above sixty percent that's generated by tourists. And so about forty percent by residents, and so you can kind of see the, the mix there.
Thank you.
Okay, from that forty-eight million dollars in estimated collections from the total of Beaufort County, the state takes the first five percent, and they, they call it a Robin Hood provision, and it's allocated to other jurisdictions. But, and so what we would be talking about is of the forty-eight, two goes to the state, and forty-six would be split among the county and municipalities. Of that forty-six million dollars, state law requires the first seventy-one percent to go to property tax relief. And so of that forty-six million, thirty-two million is for property tax relief. And that's required, and twenty-nine percent has some options. Of that seventy-one percent, two-thirds of it, seventy-one percent is further split. By two-thirds of that property tax relief is county tax relief. Of course, all town of Hilton Head Island property owners are Beaufort County property owners, and so there's an overlap there. And so Hilton Head Island, our property owners would get county tax relief sixty-seven percent, and they would also get municipal tax relief and thirty-three percent. And so that splits up at almost twenty-two million and ten million for the total of thirty-two million dollars in property tax relief. And that, that's the amount that's required. Okay? So of the municipal property tax relief, and so that's thirty-three percent of the seventy-one percent. What we're doing is we're following state law, and so if this seems overly complex, we're just following the state prescribes. This is the formula, and this is how you do it. And so we're just walking through those requirements, and so the state law. Yes, yes, sir.
Can you go back one slide, please? I was trying to get unmuted when you went.
Okay.
Is the sixty-seven percent dedicated only to unincorporated areas? You were saying that we get a dual benefit. Can you go into that just a little bit more, please?
And it is not. So it's all residents of the county would benefit based on their appraised and assessed values. And so town of Hilton Head residents would benefit from that sixty-seven percent, and they would benefit from the thirty-three percent, but it would be shared amongst all the county property taxpayers.
Do we have an estimate of that combined benefit to Hilton Head Island residents?
Yes, we do, and you'll see it later in, later in the presentation. So, yes, of thirty-two million is required to go to property tax relief. Some of it county, which is all county taxpayers, and some of it is municipalities. Other municipalities, that is split further by population, and these are according to the last census. And so you can see the difference split based on the population ratio. Hilton Head, you can see a five point four million out of the ten point eight million, so looking at about half.
John, what was the last census that you're relying on?
These numbers, I'm thinking that it was the 2010 census.
Twenty-ten, okay. Our population has been hovering around forty thousand. So is there going to be an adjustment?
And so I think a part of this is that state law prescribes how the county will split these dollars, and then further how the municipalities will split the dollars. And so when and if, if this choice is made, and if this tax is applied, then when the county has the opportunity to make the split, they will use the most recent numbers.
That's prescribed, that they will use the latest numbers?
Yes, that state law says to use that, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Of the amount that's not required to be used for property taxes, half of it is split by population, and here, I think this also speaks to Mr. Ames' question, is that Beaufort County, all municipal residents are county residents, and so that's where you get that Beaufort County is a, is a number, and then they're also weighted with the individual municipalities. And here's, here's the six point six million dollars to split between the different jurisdictions, including Beaufort County. Other half of that twenty-nine percent, so the big seventy-one percent goes to property tax. Twenty-nine percent is chosen. Each municipality or each jurisdiction has the opportunities to make decisions on the other. Twenty-nine percent, half of it is population, half of it is point of sale. And so here's the split that's based on the location of each sale. And
So I have a question. I realize it may be premature for the question, this question as well, but have we been given any indication of two things? One, what Beaufort County would do with their portion of retained revenue from this penny tax, not used for property tax relief? And is there any historical data, as I read in the, in the presentation, I believe that grab the number, but currently thirty-two of forty-six counties in the state of South Carolina have adopted this tax, this local option sales tax. Do we even have historical data in terms of what they've used their property with those additional funds on? I'd be interested in that.
Totally, and so I understand, and I certainly might be corrected, but I understand that Beaufort County has just agreed to put it on the ballot, and it would be split according to state law, and then they didn't make any decision about the amount beyond what's required for property tax relief. It's just, okay, would the residents be for this initiative? And then as far as other jurisdictions, we know anecdotally, most, I think, would use it for capital improvements, but some will use it for operations, and, and there would be a good mix across the state on those jurisdictions.
And maybe asking this again at the wrong time, but in terms of that question, and if, if you're more comfortable having someone else answer it, I'll hold the question. But I understand within our county, what folks are saying that they would use the money for. I'm just curious as to those current thirty-two counties, what it, where those extra monies have gone to. And, but that may be a question for later in the conversation, so I'll, I'll hold that question. Thank you.
Yeah, and, you know, Mr. Orlando may have additional information, but I, I don't have specifics about that.
Yeah, yeah. Didn't mean to put you on the spot. Thank you.
John, if you would, go back to slide nine.
Sure.
Are the, are the municipalities being double counted in that two hundred and thirty-five thousand?
They are, yes. And, and that comes back to all county resident, or all residents of a municipality are also residents of the county. So that's the second half, and we'll go further here. And so of this, the first seventy-one percent property taxes, the second twenty-nine percent is allocated to the jurisdictions. And here's the different split. You got half of it by collections, point of sale, half of it by population, and the total for each jurisdiction. So in addition to the required property tax relief, in Hilton Head, there would be an additional three point six million dollars annually for town council to decide how they would choose to use that.
Is there a reason Hardyville continued, throughout the slides as I reviewed for the meeting, Hardyville has no data indicated?
And we've had conversations with Hardyville, and their expectation is, is as they are growing, they are going to be a part of the split, and the expectation is, is that the numbers will be similar to Yemecee, at least at the start, and they will be considered, and they're going to get proceeds. And so it, it's just an acknowledgement that that jurisdiction is going to be a part of the future.
Did they have a 2010 census that could be used in terms of at least estimating where that would come into play? Because all of the numbers here, without them having any data presented, equals a hundred percent. So we're kind of not necessarily playing on a, a real even field without their data added in, even at the minimal amount maybe of Yemecee's, or from what the census.
And that's, we, we were on a conference call last week, and officials from Hardyville were comfortable with these calculations, and, and they knew that they were going to be included in the mix. But as far as how this was presented, they were fine with that.
But how does that, how does that, and again, if it's a question for another time, but how does that impact the numbers that we are looking at that, that impact Hilton Head?
I think it would be very minimal. I, I think and, and we can do an analysis area a little more specifically, but, but, you know, it will have an impact, but I would say it's not big by any means.
John, I have a question for you. I think I'm stating the obvious here, but this three point six million dollars that you're showing is just an estimate, and it's just an estimate based upon current property values and populations and so forth, and so that will change over time. I guess my question is, do you go through a new calculation each year? And how do you determine what the change in population is?
That's, that is my understanding of the law, is that the split calculation would happen at the county. The county would have to follow state law, and they would have to use the most recent numbers that are available, whether they're a census, and those happen every ten years, or the assessed value, and the assessed value is updated every single year. And so that's happening at the county side, and they split the dollars for each jurisdiction.
Yes, but I don't think there's any way to determine what the change in population is short of the ten-year census.
Right, yeah, I, I, yes. Because those are the official numbers, and the Beaufort County assessor would provide the official numbers for all of the appraised and assessed values, and so those would be updated each year. And so there also has to be a calculation, and this is not a part of the presentation, but how much we estimate this, these collections to be versus how much is actually collected, and those are needed to be trued up every single year. And so there's an expectation, is that nobody is going to get this exactly right, but you have to make an adjustment every single year to true it up. So, big picture of our forty-eight million dollars, that's our estimated local option sales tax collections. First, five percent goes to the state. Of the rest of that, seventy-one percent is tax relief, and that split of the seventy-one percent is split two ways. Sixty-seven percent carry tax relief, twenty-one million dollars. Thirty-three percent municipal tax relief, ten point eight million. And then each jurisdiction will decide on thirteen million dollars. If you put this, this is a lot of numbers, but it also kind of walks through these different parts. And so we have, I think, we'll start here at the bottom. Forty-eight million dollars in total local option sales tax collections is expected. The state gets the first two point four million. County tax relief, twenty-one point nine. Municipal tax relief, ten point eight. And then you can go back to fifty percent of, based on collections, fifty percent based on population. That's six million, six million each for a total of forty-eight million dollars. And so if you want to look at just Hilton Head, the required amount for property tax relief is five point four million, and the two point five and the one point oh are up to town council to decide. And we can, these are the same numbers that we've just combined the split of the twenty-nine percent, and so it's the same five point four million dollars for municipal tax relief here on the island. And then town council would have the opportunity to decide on three point six million dollars and nine million dollars total. But it's the same forty-eight million dollars. And of this, and to go back to Mr. Ames' question, of this twenty-one million dollars, this is going to be allocated among all jurisdictions for county property tax relief.
John?
Yes, sir.
I'm probably going to embarrass myself asking this question, but I'll ask it anyway. What's the difference between a jurisdiction and a municipal? What, what are those two things?
I just tried to put because one of the jurisdictions is a county. It was just a more broad descriptor, I guess.
Okay, okay. I didn't know if there was something from a legal description. Okay, thank you.
That was just me. Tax relief allocated approximately based on our appraised values, and these came from the Beaufort County assessor. And so you can see Hilton Head is a significant portion of all of Beaufort County. But, and to speak to, again, Mr. Ames' question, Beaufort County outside the municipalities is a percentage of the total. And so there will be a credit just for those people, but it's also, you can see from a proportional standpoint of value, this is what's on the tax bill.
John?
Yes, sir.
Could you just, could you, could you distill this to its simplest terms? And I'm not sure this makes sense, but and, and this will be a swag figure, but can you estimate what the average resident in Hilton Head will be paying extra because of this tax? And then can you also determine on average what, what the average resident will be gaining from this tax and distill it to a net-net?
Sure, and it's, it's a little bit later in the presentation, and so let me, let me have the presentation kept, catch up to your question.
All right, thank you.
So you're, you're at. I'll try to catch up to you. Okay, so we have projected sales tax revenue of five point four million dollars. This is the required amount that is on for municipal tax relief. Appraised values, nineteen billion dollars. Here's our local option sales tax loss credit factor. This is a long way to get to on, and I also use different appraised values in the future, but I, I wanted to use what other jurisdictions are using, so we would have a, a similar consideration. You'll see future numbers, and the future numbers are based on this three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Lost tax credit, ninety-seven dollars and eighty-two cents, okay? And so if you go back to your four percent assessment, this is a full-time homeowner of your three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's fourteen thousand dollars. Municipal millage rate, twenty-three ten, county millage rate, sixty-four ten. And so the property taxes add a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, or three hundred and twenty-three dollars for town Hilton Head Island tax rate. And your property taxes on the county side, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Now, there's, there's some small differences for PSD numbers and all that, but we just try to keep just municipal tax rate, just county tax rate, and leave the other complexities out of this equation. And so currently, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, primary residents pays a total of one thousand two twenty-two. Okay, if this were to pass, and the credits applied as expected, as these calculations expect, municipal tax credit would be ninety-seven dollars. The county tax credit would be four hundred and thirty-five dollars. And so the difference would be a tax bill of one thousand two twenty-two down to a new property tax bill of six hundred and eighty-eight, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. And so that would be an estimated total tax credit, five hundred and thirty-three dollars. And then to speak to Mr. Harkins' question, is that, okay, this is our sample home value, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Our, our number is higher, so our, these numbers are going to be proportional, but this is the number that is going to be used county-wide for sample. Estimated total tax credit, five hundred and thirty-three dollars. And so what this means is you would have to spend fifty-three thousand dollars in taxable transactions in order to break even on this, and that's your number, is that, are your individuals spending fifty-three thousand dollars or more to offset this tax credit? So your tax credit is five hundred and thirty-two dollars.
I have three questions on this page, just quickly, and again, if I'm ahead of the the, on the first line, projected sales tax revenue, you, you described in some detail, which was helpful. But how does that number, and you also answered a previous question with regard to the distribution of residents versus tourists, and from some previous data, it would indicate that forty percent comes from residents and sixty percent from tourists. And of this first number, the projected sales tax revenue, though, how does that compare to other towns' projected sales tax revenue? Does, did I word that in a way that made sense, or did I miss something previously that would have indicated the same?
Yeah, let's go back here.
On the collections page.
Yeah, and so you've got your collections, and so Hilton Head Island is substantial, but you can see that the estimated collections are just a part of all of this.
Correct, but on this page, it indicates that Hilton, and I'm sorry if I'm complicating, but on that page, it was seventeen, seventeen million roughly, and on this page, it's five million, four hundred and eighty-four. What is the difference? And I'm sorry, I might be like Mr. Ames at this point, asking embarrassing questions, but if you could just clarify from my mind, I would appreciate it.
No, what you're asking is that it underscores that the state law has a really complex calculation. And, and, and so I apologize for that, just because there's so many moving parts to this. But we'll come back to this calculation, and so we have here's our number at Hilton Head, five point four million dollars, and so this is what we start with, and so.
I see that's the number that's consistent with the page, page sixteen's number, okay. So So the, the other two questions on that page is, I guess, a basic question roaming around my brain would be, we have millage, the municipal millage rate and the county millage rate as a given here, and we know that it changes over time. And so what, if anything, within that state law assures us that, on the one hand, we are paying an extra penny to receive a tax relief, though on the other hand, a change in millage rate would certainly take all these calculations.
Sure. One of the things that we would do on this is that we would set up, and it would be consistent for the county, it would be consistent for all the municipalities, is we would set up a local option sales tax fund, and so that we would have to prove each year how much is collected for tax relief, and then also prove how much is allocated back to tax relief. And that calculation will have to be done beforehand, before the tax bills go out. And then that calculation is done after the tax bills are all collected. And we have to adjust that to make sure that we are appropriately, not too much and not too little, allocating those sales taxes back to property taxes. And so there'll be a proof every single year.
So if the tax, so if the millage rate were to go up, right, either on the town side or the county side, which would increase the property tax the property tax, you're, did I get that right, that the calculation that's done year over year is that we that the calculation that's done year over year is the revenue that comes in still has to maintain minimally seventy-one percent property tax relief after the first four years?
Right, and so.
Is there, is, so obvious, my obvious question is, is, you know, we're collecting money, we're saying it's for tax relief, yet if we change the millage rate and we raise our taxes, who's getting who? We're raising taxes, providing tax relief, and really the resident is the one who never really gets ahead. That's my, my question in the most fundamental way.
Well, I guess, first of all, the assessment of millage rate is, is one hundred percent the jurisdiction of town council. So, so town council only has that authority to do that, and we would have to prove from a dollar perspective every single year that whatever is collected for local option sales tax would be given back to the property owners as a property tax credit. And so we can't speak for what future town councils might do, but we can know that we're going to have to prove every single year to the property taxpayers that, okay, we took the appropriate amount of local option sales tax and credit was applied to the tax bills.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so coming back, and this is just again for Hilton Head Island, credit to Hilton Head Island property tax owners, five point four million is required for property tax relief. Three point six million is town council's choice in how to apply those funds. And so the total expected collections for Hilton Head would be nine point eight, nine point nine million dollars. This is a really, really busy form, but it, but it may be good to just go back, but you can kind of see each jurisdiction is going to have its own calculation. Hilton Head has the beneficiary of municipal tax credit and a county tax credit. And if you look at Beaufort County, these would be the outside of any jurisdiction. And so there would be no municipal tax credit for anybody who lives outside of the municipal areas. And so, and then you can look to see what some of our neighbors, how that might impact, and each jurisdiction has their own calculation. And so you can see the different estimated total tax credits for each.
Can I ask another question here?
Sure.
So, so from the way I've looked at this busy page is that reading down on the positive end, right, the estimated total tax credit of the seven communities or jurisdictions there, we rank number seven, right? Or, or number six, I apologize, with county being, in terms of tax credit. Yet, if you look at the top line of the estimate projected sales tax revenue, and I think this kind of goes back to answering one of my questions previously, the town of Hilton Head projected sales tax revenue is number one on that list. So we're number one in contributions, number six in taking back credit. Did I get that wrong or right?
Well, I, I think I would add another
Okay.
item, and, and another consideration is that three hundred fifty thousand dollars is considered an average countywide, and average value on the island is four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. And so from a value standpoint, that additional value that's on the tax roll will mean additional credit in dollars.
Yeah, I, I get that. We're a very fortunate community to have high values. It's when assessing it, looking at constant numbers like this, though, it indicates that we're providing the most revenue into the bucket and taking up the least.
Well, I, I think this is just, if, if we held our appraised value at three fifty, here's what would happen, but it, it doesn't account for how many homes, and it doesn't account for the total amount of value.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. It helps, John. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Here's a calculation. Again, the three fifty, how does that look for the required? Here's the five point four million. Again, this is required for property tax relief, five hundred and thirty-three dollars property tax credit. Optional, and that's the twenty-nine percent optional tax relief of three point six. And so that could be an additional sixty-four dollars credit for a total of five ninety-seven forty-nine. But that's, that optional column is one hundred percent the choice of town council. This is the same calculation, the same columns, and the only thing we changed here was instead of the three hundred fifty thousand dollar for the average countywide value, this, the four hundred and seventy-one thousand for the median value on the island. And you can see the numbers go up, the tax credits go up, seven seventeen eighty-six for an eight hundred and four dollar total. And so as you're a more valuable property owner, you get more credit from the property tax credit. So how does this compare with six percent properties and ten percent properties? You get different numbers, and we can see that we have the three hundred fifty thousand home, the four seventy-one thousand dollar home, a six percent, eight hundred thousand dollar home, and a million dollars, and this is commercial. But just some other sample calculations.
Can I, so can I just point out something that's really not a question, and somebody correct me if I'm not analyzing this in a way that makes the part of, anyway. When we look at the primary home, obviously, all of those of us who live here full-time are very appreciative of the four percent, and any additional tax relief is always valued and appreciated. When we look and consider the six percent, and I know that six percent property tax owners feel as though they perhaps carry heavy burden, but in my mind at least, when I think of that, I also think of not necessarily those who are second homeowners, but separating it into yet another category of those who are investment homeowners and use short-term rentals, use their property as a short-term rental. They're recouping much of that tax in, in the profits that they make, and they also have the advantage of using those taxes as part of their write-offs. And so three different categories, three different outcomes, I guess, to consider with regard to the property tax relief benefit. I'd prefer to see, if possible, more of it go to those who, of those former, two former categories, those who are permanent residents and those who are perhaps secondary property owners who use it exclusively for personal use. But anyway, just to comment along the way, since the, the analysis was there in front of us.
John, before we go forward with, excuse me, Tammy, were you finished?
I, I absolutely was. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Before we go forward to the, to the staff recommendations, one of the things we always have to look at is the regressive nature of sales tax. I think one of the factors in trying to determine that regressive impact is to refresh ourselves on the exemptions from the sales tax under South Carolina law. If I am correct, food and medicine are exempt. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, I don't.
You don't remember?
Answer that question.
And I think there are other exemptions, but those two major categories, I believe I'm correct on that.
So, yeah, this is Josh. Actually, the Department of Revenue publishes a very kind of comprehensive document that looks at local sales and use taxes, and then goes into a fairly in-depth discussion of the exemptions. And so to your, to your question, you know, in typical attorney answer, the, the response is it depends. I wouldn't categorize all food as being exempt, but some food, particularly food that's purchased with food stamps, is exempt. Medications are exempt, but vitamins are not. So it, it does get to be a little bit complicated, but I would refer folks to that Department of Revenue kind of guidance that if you really want to see what is in and what is out in terms of exemptions, there is a comprehensive document that provides that information.
Could you send that link out, Josh?
Be happy to.
Yeah, I think that's, that is information that we need to have in coming to this decision. Thank you.
Okay, and yeah, I would also point back to, if you look at your property tax or primary home at three hundred fifty thousand dollars appraised value, break-even sales tax purchases, and that's, that's taxable according to South Carolina law at fifty-three thousand dollars. So what does all this mean? What are we recommending? And so staff is recommending to town council to recognize that state law requires seventy-one percent of the proceeds used for property tax relief. Staff is recommending, town council can choose their own response. The staff is recommending that a hundred percent of the town's proceeds go toward property tax relief for the first four years. And so town council has an option to do something different, but that was our recommendation. And we have a CIP that's funded this year. We are comfortable with next year's CIP, and so this, and because we are still in a pandemic, that was part of the thought process in this recommendation, but town council has final say, and, and so we just put this before you to consider. And so what that would mean is that after four years, future town councils could decide on future usage, uses of that twenty-nine percent, knowing that that seventy-one percent is property tax relief. And then Beaufort County, we wouldn't be an outlier by any means. We would just join thirty-two of the forty-six counties that already have this property tax relief. And so we're right in line, and we're not an outlier statewide in those decisions. And so another thing that helps the town is that this does further diversify our revenue streams. And so that makes, helps to make the town more resilient from different economic challenges, is that this is just one more way to help financially be more resilient. And so our last item on this is provide information to voters through a regional municipal initiative about facts on this ballot question. So knowing that other jurisdictions are working together to put some facts for voters to be able to decide for themselves, do they want to enact this tax or not enact this tax? That would just give more background information, and people could do their own research to make their own conclusion about whether or not to vote for or against this initiative. And so I would wrap up my, my comments there and give it back to town council if they would have any comments or questions.
I have one comment. Walk us one comment before we start.
Thank you, Mayor Council. John, thanks for a wonderful deep dive in the presentation. And I think it's just important to note, the one thing that's not in the presentation out loud is that in April twenty twenty-one, Beaufort County adopted the ordinance calling for the countywide referendum. So it's very important to know that, that in April, not that long ago, twenty twenty-one, they adopted the ordinance calling for the countywide referendum on the question of adding the one percent as a local option sales tax. Again, as a recap, it can be used for property tax, CIP programming and operations. That's one thing that came out of today's conversation, that I want, I want to make sure that, you know, future councils, other municipalities, Councilwoman Becker asked the question, thirty-two of forty-six adopted, how could they use it? In my conversations with Scott Slatton over the years and along the way on this, it was a mixed bag, right? But, but I think we have to have the confidence that municipalities, counties throughout the state, the thirty-two of forty-six are using it for the way the South Carolina code allows it with the split of seventy-one, twenty-nine. But they're not all just using it on property tax credit or capital projects. Some are using it for different programs and different operations. And if you'd like, I can, I can dig through and, and we could put something out on a listserv and do our best to figure that out. But again, that's a game time decision annually in the budget process to determine how they use it. We could go back and, and look. And again, to remind us, this is really, you know, because of that ordinance, often Beaufort, Port Royal adopted formal resolutions declaring their support and asking, and, you know, one, asking for it to be on the ballot, but then also pledging their support. So I just wanted to clarify those two things before we, we had some more conversation about it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
There are no citizens that signed up to speak today, so that's that. Was, have questions now? We'll slide out. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Lando, Mr. Troyer, for putting together such a detailed presentation. Really helps and appreciate that being available to the public beforehand. The the resolution, I guess in the last sentence states that there's not to exceed a twenty-five grand for educational purposes. And in the wrap-up of the presentation, it's, it's given off that we are going to be participating in a, I guess, a regional education exercise. Can, can you help me with that a little bit and just kind of walk me through what that looks like, feels like?
Well, state law is very specific about not being advocacy, but it does specifically allow to go through some of these calculations and go through how does this work for an average taxpayer, go through how would the proceeds, you know, how does the state law work and how could it be, how it would be applied to the county and to the different municipalities? I hope that's where we might get, but it's, it's strictly factual, and that would be our participation is, is to allow, is to join that initiative to let, to give some taxpayers more information so they can make their decision.
Sure, and I guess for our understanding, when I say our, I'm talking about town of Hilton Head. I've appreciated how you've displayed the contributions and the credits, John, and the fact that there is a, I guess, a double dip, so to speak, right? And the fact that there is a, I guess, a double dip, so to speak, right? Because we are town and county residents. Curious to know about the breakdown of the voters when it comes to this question that will be on the referendum, okay? What percentage of influence will Hilton Head have on the question, okay? And I'm not looking for that right now, okay, but I think that's important as we, as we, as we move forward. And, and to that point, I understand that there are no, no one signed up to speak today. And according to the portal, only a couple have made comments. You know, on, on the surface, you know, I am in support of, of this, but I, I do, as always, want to make sure that we are listening to our residents, okay? And, you know, I know we're, I think Mr. Orlando said 10 weeks out now or somewhat. Just want to have some confidence that we are, we are truly making a recommendation that, that's not going to bite us later on. I, I will say that I've got somewhat of referendum bad taste in my mouth at the moment, but I'd like to, I'd like to have some, some, some level of confidence that we're going in the right direction based on how the public sees this. I'm not sure that's been on many folks radar. Not sure what, I guess, connection the county had to the population when they made their decision back in April. But no, at least for my, I'd like to make sure that we've given it some time for folks to, to chew on and then push forward. Those are my comments, Mr. Mayor. And again, thank you, Mr. Orlando, Mr. Troyer, for a well-done presentation.
Mr. Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we parse out this recommendation, just clarify for me, would we be approving, adding our support to a referendum or adding our support to a sales tax?
Well, you could, you could, Mr. Hawkins, you could, you could do it one of two ways. We've recommended support of both. We've recommended, of course, it's on the ballot. You could support it being on the ballot. And in turn, give me some direction on, on how deep you would like me to be involved with staff and our great team helping to educate on the facts. Or, or you could support the, the tax as it is questioned on the referendum. So ultimately, you'd be saying, please support it, vote yes to allow for it. It's your prerogative. I, I simply brought forward a resolution that was passed around, handed out. We've taken a look at it. We've massaged it a little bit, but we've asked the same question that others have asked for support, not just on the referendum, simply because Beaufort County already voted to put it on the referendum.
All right. Well, I, I can see the real value of supporting the educational effort. And I, I can see the value of putting it on the referendum. I, I was just wondering whether there was some protocol that restricted us from voicing our opinion about the tax itself. That, that was behind my question. The, the other question I have is that the 71% that is pretty sacrosanct in terms of helping our residents, can that survive the four-year period? Or will other town councils have the ability to change that?
The 71% is dictated by state law and cannot change for the life of the local option sales tax.
Okay, thank you. And in my understanding on, on the sales tax, to going back to Glenn, I'm not an expert on this by any means, but I, I think in terms of food, if it's, if it's prepared food, you pay a tax. If it's not prepared food, you don't pay a tax. And for, for drugs that are prescription drugs, you don't pay a tax. But I'm not familiar with the long list that was referred to before. Those are all the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Ms. Ames?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have, I guess, four significant points. And, and I, I, I have the vibrations that the way this is positioned now is a red flag. First of all, we are being presented with information that the public, by and large, has not had the opportunity to review. And so I think that our taking action today would be a mistake. Secondly, and Bill pointed this out, I think by reference, we are being asked to declare our support for the passage of a local option sales tax. And I think that language is disrespectful of our constituents because it basically says we have already taken a position without our understanding of what they believe and, and would, and prefer. Thirdly, the language speaks to a participation in, in an effort to educate residents on the factual attributes of this local option sales tax. So one, we have taken the position we support it. And two, now we are going to quote unquote educate the attributes. I think that's a huge red flag. It suggests that we really don't care what the residents think. So I think that it's important for us to change that declare the support of the passage of the local option sales tax to the support of the referendum. And secondly, if we are going to quote unquote educate as opposed to market, I think we should be specific that we want that participation of $25,000 to deal with both the advantages and disadvantages of the proposal of the local option sales tax. I, I don't like the taste in my mouth of the four-year sweetener to make permanent a tax that will assuage current taxpayers. That just doesn't feel right to me. Either we are going to be upfront that we need the 29% as a expansion of, or a diversification of revenues. And we are going to say to the public, this very likely will be permanent. I don't think we should be trying to buy their vote with four years of postponement. Lastly, I am not in a, inultrally opposed to this diversification because I do believe that our town has to find revenues for investment. Investment to improve the infrastructure, investment to improve other amenities and programs. I also would ask the question, based on the information that staff has at this point, would land in the repurposing of commercial properties be a, would, would those be appropriate for use of these funds?
Yes, they would. It's, town council has the, the choice.
Okay. And then secondly, programming. John, we would also, council would also have the opportunity to invest in workforce housing from these funds.
They would.
Okay. And lastly, I think the public is sensitive to the idea of always increasing staff levels, albeit in some cases, it's really important. But I just see a, I think this council has to think through how it wants to perhaps prioritize the use of these funds. I don't want to go very far on that. I haven't given it a lot of thought. But to summarize, I would advocate for council to use today's meeting as an introduction to the public and for the public's benefit of what lost means. Give the public an opportunity, give the packet an opportunity to say something. And then in two weeks, come back and ask council to support the passage, to support the, a referendum in November and participate in an educational process that includes both the advantages and disadvantages to taxpayers of this proposal. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Ms. Becker?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess where David left off is where I'll pick up. So this is a special meeting on a very important topic. One clarification that I haven't heard out loud in a meaningful way that I want to confirm is that this 1%, one penny tax, this is a permanent tax, correct? We keep talking about four years and 71%, but no one has said out loud for everyone to hear that this is a tax that does not go away. We've described how it can be used, but we haven't let folks know that if you think all these sweeteners, as I've heard it described, are, are favorable and they certainly sound favorable upfront, right? But this is a long-term forever tax. Just want that noticed here because I don't feel as that the residents of the town of Hilton Head, Ireland have been given sufficient notice and opportunity to hear what we've just gone through. And I probably should have said first and foremost, John, that was a great presentation. Thank you for answering, as always, my 100 questions, that it helps me and you always have great insight. And I appreciate that. We all do. And it's the first time, other than being able to pull through the agenda, which we all had and it was publicized, to really get our teeth into what this means. So I, like David, think that we are ahead of ourselves. I think this is an opportunity to present the facts, let the residents of this town know what is on the referendum, if part of the referendum. I understand and appreciate that the county has already decided that the referendum is going on the November ballot. However, whether or not we choose to lend our support without having these important conversations is, I think, premature at this point. We have another town council regular meeting coming up shortly and probably should give some time for people to digest what they've heard today for the packet as Ireland said, David said, to pick up and put some words to it in the paper. I'm curious as to, I believe there were, it was Bluffton and Port Royal, who's already gone through this process and has voted to lend their support to the referendum. Did I get that right? Yes, I'm assuming, yeah.
Yes, yes, ma'am. I was, I was thinking John was going to jump in. I didn't want to step on his toes.
What about the other towns? What about the other towns?
I believe they all have.
You believe they all have?
Well, Beaufort, Port Royal and Bluffton. Yeah.
Okay. Well, that leaves a couples yet that have, that we don't know about. And in, in their, in their agreement, had they also agreed to contributing $25,000 to an educational process?
The actual amounts are split, so there's two different, there's two different pieces of the funding. Some of those dollars are for a consultant. And then some of those dollars are for printed materials. Our portion of the consultant should counsel of support would be approximately $10,000. I believe Bluffton and Beaufort would also share that same cost. And then the other municipalities, which are somewhat smaller and with different budgets, have an agreed to different proportion of, of pay. The additional $15,000 would be spent by us for us based upon those collective materials, those collective educational materials. So to that degree, to that degree, I wouldn't know if Bluffton would spend that much or Port Royal. I, I, I wouldn't know, but I do know the consultant fee.
But we would be, we, so we would be regardless of what other people have made a commitment to, committing $15,000 to those materials. Those materials and the hiring of the consultant, is that a process that the county alone is undertaking?
It is a process that the municipalities are undertaking. The county is not participating.
So we would hire our own consultant?
It would be a collective consultant. The city of Beaufort, town of Bluffton, Port Royal, Harneyville have already vetted a consultant and I believe as late as last week hired them. Recently, very recently. With or without our participation, they are moving forward.
And so the assumption is we ju, we would just use their consult, that consultant?
Yes, and, and I know they are.
Consultant that was utilized for the one penny bridge?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Different.
Okay. Because I bring that up because I think, and I think we've heard from others, a concern with regard to how, if this, if we were to move forward with this, how that educational piece would take, take place. And a lot of the wording in the documents that we had today talks about the extolling and then publicizing the virtues of, of this and all the positive attributes. And I think that David points out that a pro and con list, to give people both sides of the story is important, especially in light of the, I, I think, increasing lack of confidence that the, that 70,000, 7,000 plus petition signers have in how the, how the penny tax for the bridge was sold and how it is now being used. So I think that we have to be very, very careful with that. That's a lot of people and that's a lot of remorse and regret. And I, and I, I think that we need to make sure that we think about that as in terms of one step further, how the county will utilize their share of these revenues and how it impacts the town. We have a bridge that initially we were told that the town would have some say in terms of whether or not it would, the one deficient bridge would be replaced or rebuilt or expanded. And now it seems as though that in fact isn't really true. The bridge is out of our control, anything out of town limits. And so I worry, quite frankly, about how the, the county would utilize that money and how its impact would be on the town, whether it'd be positive, it would be what the residents of this town want or need, or whether it would be what they want for the town and how they could. I'll, I'll leave the rest of that statement alone for right now. So that, those things bother me with regard to this. It also bothers me, as I think I may have alluded to, that something of an imbalance, right? So we've got this property tax relief through this never-ending tax. But we also have future councils who can do two things. They can see how this 29% of monies get spent, whether it's in programming or CIP or, or such, and how that is the unknown and whether it spits within our limited government structure for the town of Hilton Head, which I think is important for us to think through for the future. Not the limited government, but how the funds would be, support our limited government, which I support. I think also that my concern is how you play the game of tax relief versus the rise and fall millage rates. It's easy to offset. of millage rates. Um, it's easy to offset and then increase. Um, and so I certainly look to that. I I'm also curious, um. I'm also curious about, Josh, thank you for noting that there is a list of exemptions um with regard to how those taxes are paid on a daily basis by folks out doing their shopping and the rest. And I see the number of dollars that would need to be sent before you um were at a, before you overspent um the value of what you were getting in these um first four years of the tax um relief. That isn't just another reason um to say that this meeting really ought to be um informational and discussionary in in its purpose and to leave um an actual vote of support um for a another meeting. Um, I think that we also, I think that Bill's question was an interesting question and and probably should give us some time to think about how we support it. Do we support this referendum um as a a big picture? Or is it that we support the referendum and the tax? Um, and how that kind of teases itself out in each of our minds? So a lot of questions were raised um here today, further contemplation. Concern with regard to um education is first and foremost in mind. And as everyone already knows, I'm a financial conservative, and a tax that never goes away while it seems sweet upfront um is probably not something that I can support. So I'm gonna leave it there for now, and I hope we get another opportunity to discuss before we vote.
Slidex?
Thank you, John. Uh, John Troyer, good job. Uh, your analysis was very thorough and logical, and I I understand it. Uh, a couple comments. Uh, first, this is not necessarily a zero-sum game. Uh, the tax credit does not come out of current revenue at the town. These are new revenues to come in, so I think any linkage between a credit and increased mileage is probably not accurate at this time. Uh, second comment is is that this doesn't necessarily apply to all residents. It applies to all residents that happen to be property owners. Uh, residents of the town who are renters uh likely will not see any benefit unless their landlord passes this credit on to them in lower rent. Uh, non-resident property owners will receive the same credit. So this, this accrues to people who own property, real and personal uh on the island. Uh, I see Josh in in the back of of the room. Uh, question, Josh, uh and and Mark, does Buford County uh have the ability to properly process, account, uh and allocate this tax?
Uh, I believe so. I I could jump in. If if they would put it on their, if they would put it on the ballot, they would have to. I, so I believe so. Yes, sir.
And they would do it in conjunction with the South Carolina Department of Revenue. Because this is a sales tax, it gets submitted by retailers along with their uh state sales tax uh submissions. And so in terms of ultimately collecting it, it goes through the state. The state then provides it to the county, and the county then does the calculations uh that John outlined and distributes the revenue uh from there.
I understand that, and what accounting and audit do we as a town government and the community get?
Uh, you know, I would say that the same principles that the counties held to in terms of the government financing and accountability standards, this would have to be revenue that they would have to account for in their annual CAF or as revenue in and revenue out. Uh, and obviously, that's a public document, something that we have the ability to review. Uh, so from that standpoint, it would be just like any other revenue that they would be passing on to us.
So it it comes downstream to us similar to the way the state ATAX does?
Yes, sir. I believe that to be correct.
The estimates that we are using, are they generated by the county, John?
Now, the estimates that we're using are generated by the State Department of Revenue.
Okay, I recall the estimates that were used on the one percent transportation and sales tax to be used uh for the bridges uh were supplied to us by the county, I think.
Right, well, I I can only speak to uh this proposal, and I and I know that the state has um analyzed the actual returns of the one percent on the transportation tax and made this specific projection for this specific proposal.
And the the transportation sales tax burns off or sunsets uh at four years or a hundred and twenty million, whichever comes first?
It's my understanding that the um dollar amount collection will be met before the timeframe is met.
And I also recall statements that were made. I thought coming out of the county, John, uh, that their estimates were conservative and that the hundred and twenty million rage from this one percent would occur much more quickly than four years, and and that's pretty much what you're saying. Is it, is it likely to be the same with this uh one percent lost? Are we likely to see revenue in excess of of what you're presenting?
I think uh the way that the Department of Revenue approached this is that they based it based on our um actual results of what's going on today, and and so they didn't want to be high, and they didn't want to be low. Um, and I, this is their uh best estimate of what it will be.
So this is the Goldilocks estimate. Oh, and my last comment is, uh, I understand the difference between uh supporting the referendum and supporting the passage. Uh, I like the way supporting the referendum uh presents itself to everyone that's going to be voting on this. Uh, but in in the end, regardless of what we say, whether it's passage or or referendum, in the end, the voters will decide at the ballot box, regardless of what we say and how we say it. That's it, John. Thank you.
Glenn?
Thank you. Um, I'll echo my colleagues' comments to you, John, and Mark and the rest of the staff for a very thorough presentation. This is a very complicated area. It's gonna be really hard to achieve some sort of education as we're moving it forward, but I think you've done a good job at least getting us started on this. I also appreciate thoughtful comments that I've heard today uh from my colleagues on the council. You've made me think more thoroughly about this, and uh for now I am not prepared to support the tax. And I wonder, that is, make a resolution to support the tax. And I wonder why there is pressure on us now uh to even support the referendum.
Thanks for that. I just, uh, sir, I I don't have an answer in terms of pressure about supporting the referendum. I do know that, uh, you know, what was it, April, that the county passed it? Um, the municipalities have spoken about this. They've spoken about it, I believe, at Lost. They speak about it amongst themselves in their respective councils. I know that um Yemecy recently passed a resolution of support for the referendum and whatnot, and know that the others have. And at a recent meeting with the mayors and managers, um, every six weeks or every, every quarter, it's turning out to be with the mayors and managers, they asked what we were, if we were going to support it or not. Um, I in turn asked them the question. It, this seems to be a high priority in those communities, Bluffton and Buford uh included. I asked them what their thoughts were moving forward to educate and get the word out about the referendum now that it's going to be on the ballot. This has all really been coming together since, really, the municipal association meeting was the first time I sat together collectively with the managers um where they started to talk about hiring a consultant to educate on the facts of of the program within, within those boundaries. So really, I don't know that i- it's any different now than before. It's just six weeks away. They recently hired a consultant. I mean, just recently, the ink's probably not even dry on a contract yet. They asked us, they asked me if I was going to contribute, and of course, I'm, I'm not in any place to support that contribution of funds, let alone let them know um what I think until I bring this to you. So.
Thank you. So there's really not a uh a line in the sand, so to speak, that we need to decide today or not. Uh, and that being said, um, I would like for this to get to the public of Hilton Head Island a little more uh than it has so far uh before we make a decision. And as I say, I am not prepared to support a approval or adoption of the tax. Um, I do think it's appropriate to go on the ref- on a referendum ballot, and I don't have a problem with that. Now, when we get to the twenty-five thousand dollars, I'm intrigued by the fact that the various municipalities are contributing to that, but the county is not. That that baffles me. Is that the, just the county passing the buck off to municipalities again? I realize that's, that's not a question that has an answer, um, but.
The county should never baffle you, Glenn.
Excuse me?
The county should never baffle you.
Yes, I I have dealt with the county, and so I understand what we're saying here, but it it seems to me that the county is going to, if this passes, the county is gonna share a a benefit that is, that is similar to the benefits that the the town would receive. And I think that the county should be participating in this education effort as well. Does that mean that we're not gonna do it? Probably not, but that is what my feeling is about that. And then I think most importantly to me, I am always looking for alternative revenue sources for the town. Um, a a critical need for us now, obviously, is what are we gonna do about workforce housing? It seems to me that we should not tie down the remaining twenty-nine percent uh to property tax relief, but rather we should follow the lead of the other municipalities. I doubt if anybody else is contributing a hundred percent to property tax relief for four years. Um, I suspect that there, first of all, we're locked into the seventy-one percent by the state. And so I think it is just human nature, if you will, or government nature, if you will, that we want to have another source of revenue, and this would provide that to us. So I'm not in favor of locking this in for four years. I understand the reasoning behind it. That is to sweeten the pot a little bit for the voters, but I think seventy-one percent uh is a very significant uh contribution to that tax relief to start with. And I would like for us to have the opportunity to tap into a new source of revenue, possibly for workforce housing, as David suggests, possibly for land acquisition for that or other purposes, or for repurposing of commercial buildings, or whatever else comes down the road here. So those are my feelings about that. I would prefer to see us wait a little bit before we take a vote on any aspect of it. Um, but as I said, I will not support the idea of the town coming out in favor of the tax. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all, everybody. Uh, here's what I'd like to propose, that we uh, first of all, we would consider supporting a referendum, not the tax, it sounds like, okay? What I would like to do is put this on the October fifth town council agenda, okay? What I would like to do is to ask all of you by close of business Wednesday, to send all your concerns, which you just talked about today um into Mark, so that we can prepare them between now and October fifth. And we're not running around the last day seeing what the hell everybody wants and don't want a long way. So when we don't get in by the, by close of business Wednesday, we'll assume there is none. Uh, because you have to do something, and everybody has it on their mind. Let's get it in, let's get it out. And then let's come back October fifth, put it on the agenda for a vote. Type a motion to accept that, that suggestion, that idea.
Yeah, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, I I would vote in favor of that. Uh, I think the reason for that uh support is that I think a lot of very good ideas were brought up here today, and uh, I think uh s- some modification here, I think, will enjoy uh a strong supportive of town council. Uh, and for what it's worth right now, I I would only be in favor of the referendum, not not supporting the tax, just the referendum. I I I think the seventy-one percent, it it is a a very strong enticement. I'd like to see the other twenty-nine percent uh put in some kind of escrow account, and for we uh as town council today, and for those that follow us, uh look at what the highest, the best uh use uh for those funds could be uh to, and you're to the overall benefit of the of the community, so.
If you could put that in notes by Wednesday, I'd appreciate that, Bill, okay?
Thank you. Will do.
Okay, if you had a motion, second, all in favor of doing that? Raise your right hand. Hold on. Oh, good. All in favor of doing that, raise your right hand.
Do you need a motion, Mr. Uh?
I, did you say, I must have a motion first time. Oh, you had one.
My, my understanding is there's a motion on the floor due to um s- suggest to us that we put in writing by uh Wednesday of, I think, this week, right?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Wednesday, th- this week, say, close of business time, uh, what the key elements uh wh- what key elements would be important to each of us uh to get behind doing something here?
Yeah, and the real motion is we need to put this on the October fifth town council agenda for vote.
Right, okay. You're, you're in, you're in charge of the agenda. I'm not sure we even need an uh a motion and a vote.
Good, thank you, David. That will, that will be on the October fifth agenda.
Okay, perfect.
Hey, is there anything else, anything else to discuss today? Thank you all very much, and I appreciate it. Have a good day.
All right. Thank you.